Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration meeting for today, October the 16th. Can I please get approval of the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved to second approval minutes. All in favor say aye.
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 Any noes, abstentions, the minutes are approved. We're going to go right into our discussion items and we're going to start with our Q3 Investment Report. Connor, come on down.
Tanya is on her way down right now to present this item.
Oh, she's going to present it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Then could you want to wait or can I go to Jessica?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, let's then go just jump over to Jessica for our quarterly financial report.
All right, good afternoon, council. Okay, so today I will be going over the September financial report. I wanted to start by pointing out that the quarterly financial reports, they're variance reports as of the month presented. So variance report compares budgeted financial outcomes against actual financial outcomes. And although the quarterly report informs end of year projections, it itself is not an end of year projection. And then to continue with some housekeeping for the report, I wanted to remind everyone that the city uses cash accounting throughout the year, meaning revenue and expenses are recorded only when cash is exchanged. The accounting team makes accruals that that is they link transactions to the time in which they happened, but they only do that during the year-end process, which means figures can and do significantly change once we get into period 13. So this is the fundamental difference between periodic reporting and year-end reporting. Additionally, the city budgets annual figures, which means that the year-to-date budget amounts are calculated. And this calculation uses last year's spending patterns. So if a department's spending this year is different or significantly different, then it becomes more and more difficult to better project if they're going to be over/under budget. So there are all my caveats for the report. The report itself has four sections. The first one is general fund financial summary. Section two is other fund financial summary. Section three is the CIP project status updates and section four is economic briefing. I do spend most of my time on general fund. So section one of the report begins with a very important summary table. Here we see that year-to-date budget variance for general fund revenues and expenses. So this table indicates general fund revenue is favorable to budget by 1.6% and general fund expenses are unfavorable to budget by 0.4%. And we're going to dive deeper into these variances, but straight away you can tell that as of the end of September, revenues are coming in greater than expenses might be coming in over. So it's a good favorable overall position. All right, so this table right here, it shows how general fund revenues and expenses were amended during the year. Every quarter in the footnote, you will find the quarterly SBOs that have contributed to an amendment this, well, this quarter is really just August or September since I reported on July. There were no SBOs or budget transfers that changed the amended budget. Only the mid-year adjustment SBO that was approved in July has impacted the general fund so far this year wherein both expenses and revenues increased by about $9 million. Okay, so page two begins the deeper dive into general fund revenues. You can see the general fund departments have received around 59% of their annual budgeted revenues. Again, during the year, the accounting team only records cash when it is received, not necessarily when it is earned, so that is why you're seeing less than expected. The next big influx of cash for the city will be in November for second half property taxes. Also, some of these revenues, for instance, I think the neighborhood and the CED division, they don't get those revenues until the year-end process has completed. All right, so you'll see that non-departmental gets a lot of the revenue, so I break that out independently. And that is because they receive that department receives about 90% of general fund revenues. So it's important to look at that. And this table shows the revenue categories themselves and how they're trending, for the most part, above last year's actuals. You can see it's almost 5% above last year's actuals at this time last year. And that growth is mostly in taxes, but extremely in miscellaneous revenues. So we'll dive into that. So this is general fund revenue categories and you can see their budget, their year-to-date calculated budget, and then their actuals, and if they're favorable or unfavorable for the year thus far. And this agrees with the previous page and shows miscellaneous revenues is contributing the most to that favorability. And miscellaneous revenues are almost entirely driven by the interest earnings. And that has seen an increase due to the result of the national Fed Fund rate increases that has taken place this year. So our own like treasures cash, for instance, is earning a lot more money than expected in the budget. The revenue category that is underperforming the most is fines and forfeits, and this is driven by fewer traffic and parking violations presumably due to the lack of traffic officers. So that is general fund revenues. And then we come down.
Just a second. Could you go back to, we were just curious on the cannabis spend. Could you just explain what's on the intergovernmental miscellaneous?
Yes. Yes.
I can't quite see it at an angle, but.
So the cannabis use tax, that is our share of the state's cannabis use tax. So it is coming, it looks like trending 32% more than expected because you can see it's already almost reached its entire annual budget.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, real quick, if you called out the fines related to automobiles and whatnot, but what about fines related to landlords? Where would those be going and how would we see if there's an uptick there?
Landlord fines.
Per our landlord tenant ordinance passed earlier this year with the.
Right, no, I remember, I don't remember, they do not go to the general fund.
Okay.
I believe, I just can't remember which fund it actually goes to.
They go back into like the code, code enforcement fund?
I think so. It's actually quite complex, so.
Okay.
Are you talking about like the fee per door?
No, not that. I'm talking about like enforcement from, you know.
Oh, then yeah, that would be code enforcement, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because I think it'd be great to be able to see and monitor that as well.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Jessica, what was the number on the cannabis?
The budget for the year was $500,000, but we've already collected $485,000.
Okay, and remind me, what's the percentage that goes to police? What's the percentage that is ours to work with?
So in, that doesn't go into effect until 2024. So in 2023, all of the revenue collected went into police investigations. But in 2024, I feel like only, I don't think it was a percentage.
It was a flat amount.
It was just a flat $500,000 that goes to police in 2024.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so let's look at page four. It begins the dive into general fund expenses. And when I looked, I look at every department that has an unfavorable variance as of the end of September, and I review it one by one. And I try to do year-end projections to see if we truly need to be concerned or not. Because again, the year-to-date budget is a calculation based off of last year's spend. So I have to see, well, what is their spending patterns this year and is it significantly different? Did they get an amended SBO? What is going on? So I will say that after I looked at each and every one, I only have a few that I am concerned about going over budget. And that is legal, public defender, and fire all have unfavorable wage and benefit variances. So legal has had to rely on temps more than they had budgeted for, and they had a large leave payout after the passing of an employee that was also not budgeted. Public defender, they have already used 81% of their standby pay budget. And fire has used 88% of their uniform overtime budget. This is all, of course, as of the end of September. But, yeah.
Jessica, sorry, real quick, legal, is that encompassing of prosecutors as well? Or is that just our in-house legal?
Yeah, that's also prosecutors, yes.
All of it, okay.
So more departments are actually favorable to budget, so that is why fund-wide, we're trending as of the end of September to perhaps be $732,000 over budget. And then another way we like to look at it instead of just by department is by expense category. So this is kind of like the revenue category. So here we see inter-fund billing and transfers out appear to be unfavorable to budget at this point in time, which again is as of the end of September. And inter-fund billing, they look over budget because one internal service fund, they charge their annual services at the beginning of the year instead of consistently throughout the year. So that's an approach. However, more importantly, fleet charges to SPD for repair, fuel, and car washes have been higher, and they are all at over 90% of the annual budget already spent. And then as for transfers out, this is, this is the same as last time. So fire, they consistently, it's been the practice to receive advances in the first half of the year to meet their payroll before the first half property taxes come in. And then during the second half, we short them amount, that same amount, so that it evens out. So that's why the first half always looks like we're trending over budget when we're managing it as a calendar year. And also, again, remember that the budgeted year-to-date numbers, they are calculated and they are based off of last year's spend. Well, last year, they're weighted heavily to December because again, last year, we paid fire retro pay all in December. So that's also pulling it out. So at this time, the variance report indicates the general fund will likely end the year with more revenue than budgeted, than budgeted, and expenses fund-wide could come in slightly under budget. So this means 2023 appears to be trending toward a small addition to unappropriated fund balance. And then page six actually shows the reserves and it's super tiny. Where is, I have the new version of PDF, so I don't really remember how to use this version. But what it's showing is that the reserves are basically untouched, that we haven't gone into any unappropriated fund balance or reserves yet this year.
Jessica.
Yeah.
Can you go back to police? And you said fuel, car wash, what was the other thing?
Yeah, down here, mhm.
So don't we have, isn't the Nelson Center set up to, for fuel and car wash? Or am I mistaken?
I believe they are, yeah.
So why would there be extra expense for that? Why wouldn't police use that?
Oh, no, I think that they are, it's just that they are using it more than budgeted.
Okay. Do we know why?
I mean, no.
The cars dirty?
Yeah, I mean, flea repair, I mean, we've heard again and again, they have old cars, so that I understand, but.
That part I get, but the car, I'm kind of going, okay, that's not making sense to me.
Well, if it, if it saves us money, I'm fine with some dusty police cars, so I mean, that's okay.
Sure.
As long as they're getting out there and enforcing, that's, that's what matters.
Yeah, right. Okay, so at this time, I'd just like to mention that we have begun our annual exercise of evaluating and analyzing all funds for end-of-year projections. And so we do anticipate having SBOs to you fine folks next November's FNA Committee. There are only four that I am aware of right now that we're exploring, if it even needs to be done.
Could I ask another question?
Yeah.
Does the surplus include fire overtime?
No.
Okay, so shouldn't it?
I mean, it will. So currently, right now, what we're looking at, this is one of the, fires, one of the funds technically outside general fund that we are evaluating, is their overtime has dropped by 31% year-to-date compared to last year. And so we're seeing if it's going to continue to drop and to see, we've got two more pay periods to look at. And then we're going, we're attempting to see if police is actually going to come under budget. So we're trying to balance the two.
Okay, and when, when is that going to happen then? In two weeks?
Oh, by, yeah, November FNA Committee, yeah, correct. Yeah.
So Jessica, that print was really fine on the unappropriate fund balance. What was, you said it was tiny?
Oh, yeah.
Can you just read it for us? Yeah, that sheet, what was?
Yeah, so here, I'll just drop down here. So the revenue stabilization remains to be about 7.4 million. The contingency reserve balance remains at about 21 million, and the unappropriated fund balance right now is about 7.6 million. So we're at about 36 million in reserves and unappropriated.
Thank you.
Okay, so this goes much quicker. So pages seven through 13, they outline the other fund revenue and expense variances. And the timing of all other funds' ins and outs is a variable very much specific to each fund. So we don't spend a lot of time on them until year-end projections, and that is what we are doing this week, to be honest. And let's continue down. Pages 14 through 20 provide CIP project status updates to all 2023 projects. So if you have a project you want to know about, you can go in here and of course zoom in and take a look at what the notes are. And then pages 21 and through 23 are economic indicators for consideration. These pages echo a lot of what Dr. Jones talked about just last Thursday. So page one shows unemployment in the area to be low, possibly too low, and contributing to inflation. In fact, you can see that for a few months there, we were below the national unemployment And then of course, this page is taxable sales. And it has increased year-over-year by around 2%. We have 1.97 there. And although retail trade has decreased, the other categories, especially accommodation and food services, they have more than made up for it, so that's why we see that 2% growth. And we do expect August taxable sales, because of course taxable sales are always two months in arrears, to be higher than July's due to back-to-school. But if it will contribute to a greater year-to-date increase, we will see. Okay, so that's a lot. Do you have any more questions?
Yes, but. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, we'll go back to our quarterly investment report. Tanya and Connor.
Okay, thank you, councilmembers. So this is your quarterly investment report to show you what the city is doing.
Tanya, I'm not seeing it in the folder here for October. Would it be in a different folder?
Could it get mis-saved as September?
September, August.
Well, this is the quarterly report again to tell you what we do with all of that cash that comes into the city and how it's being managed. And of course, with me is Connor, our investment analyst that assists with that. So while Jacoby is bringing that up, we're really going to talk about the portfolio, what the composition of the portfolio is, and what the general performance of the portfolio is. At the start of 2023, we really put forward a different kind of strategy that got its legs more in 2022 because of ARPA. And that is because the city then received $81 million of cash that we wouldn't normally have. And so we needed to anticipate how to invest that and anticipate when it's going to go out the door. So that's what we've been doing and so we kind of shifted the strategy just a little bit to make sure we were more liquid in our portfolio than we normally would be. So it's really balancing investment earnings is a key priority of the investment portfolio, but more importantly, these days, it's liquidity. We wanted to make sure that we had the funds in hand as those grants were getting let out into the community. So next, so here are balances, cash equivalents through September 30th, and you can see small decline to $371 million, which is to be expected. November is a big month when we receive property tax, a big influx of property tax. So we do tend to see this down and then up, down and up. And then through the construction season and our projects, we also see a little bit of fluctuation in our cash balances for that. So specifically, and I know it's really hard to read there, probably the most important thing if I could point out is really in the treasury cash, that LGIP and what we hold there. You can see right now, we're holding about 15% in that area, which is where we really want to be. We try to always have that target of at least 50 to 70 million on hand at any one point in time, particularly right now. Another little thing just to call out is the SIP or Spokane Investment Pool internal loans. From an investment portfolio perspective, these are viewed as alternative investments for the city. We could choose to invest in ourselves or choose to invest and buy another security that's out there. So we treat these like securities from an investment perspective, and our current composition is about 7% of our entire portfolio is in our SIP program with the policy at 15% cap in that area.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Bingle has his hand raised.
Go ahead, thank you. Councilmember Bingle?
Thank you, Tom. What is our like, what is our standard return on the SIP loans that we give out?
I will have to get that answer to you. I don't know off the top of my head for, for just the SIP loan element.
Okay, the reason why I ask is, you know, as we're looking for, you know, all of these investments on our SIRS accounts, I just wonder if there might be a discussion to be had here that you and I can discuss some other time.
Yeah, certainly. Our practice is when we do choose these investments, we take at least 50 basis points above the like maturity treasury. So there is a little bit more of a return on those investments versus if we were just going to be investing in T-bills or T-bonds. So here is the, the composition or maturities and purchases. So you can see there were some maturities that occurred in this last quarter. And if you look at the very last number there where it's showing like 0.19, 1.85%, 1.57. So this is where we are starting to roll off some of those maturities that were invested when yields were really, really low, which is, gives us the opportunity then to reinvest in higher yielding security instruments. No purchases were made, and this is anticipation of our cash flow needs particularly related to ARPA. So next, continuing on that strategy of we are trying to increase our liquidity, again in preparation for 2024 when we're expecting more of a spend down. And so we're going to really tighten up, and this is a look through September of 2024 when you see some of those securities rolling off. And that is very intentional. Any investments that will take place will be on a very short-term basis, and that is where we're also seeing the best yields right now. In fact, I think the next slide, yes, the next slide, you can see the yield curve there, it is still inverted. So really, our best investment opportunities are going to be within that one year to, you really don't want to go past 18 months of investment opportunities. And even when we're talking about LGIP, we might look at 30-day or 60-day investment opportunities, but right now LGIP is still earning a higher interest than what we could get otherwise. So that's where we're holding some of those more liquid funds. Unrealized gains and losses, we do have reported right now a $14 million loss, year-to-date is 8.5. So as we talked about, as we get closer to the maturities of these older investments that were invested in low-yielding instruments, that loss, unrealized loss, which is just on paper, is going to get smaller and smaller and smaller as we get closer to those maturity Here's kind of a breakdown of where those unrealized gains and losses are coming from. And I know it's hard to read, you can see a bulk of them are coming from two main places. And that is really the 2016 investments, and those were very long-term. Again, this was when yields were really coming down very quickly. Even in 2015, I remember a lot of conversations about what if things go negative? The United States has never experienced that, but Japan did experience negative yields at that time. So there was a lot of discussion, so that, that makes sense. And then in 2022, we were starting to have that big shift happen with Fed Funds Rate. So those are the securities that are contributing to that loss. Again, those are unrealized. We are, we hold to maturity. Comparing against our benchmark, we are making a lot of great progress. Every quarter, we're making just incremental progress towards hitting some of our benchmarks. You can see our maturity is almost on point with the benchmark. Same with duration, we're getting closer and closer to that. And then when you look at, we're outperforming our benchmark on coupon. Our portfolio yield to date at 3.25 is a little bit aways from that benchmark, and that is a lot of those older securities that we're holding at those low yields. So again, as those start to roll off in the next year, we're going to make more progress towards that benchmark on yield as well. Connor, do you have anything?
Um, no, that was actually, yeah, very thorough.
Any questions for Tanya or Connor? All right, see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have Mr. Delaney come up with municipal court SBO for safety and security upgrades. Howard, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Howard Delaney, Municipal Court, here talking about actually what would be the first of two SBOs. For a little bit of background, we started leasing from the county areas of the Public Safety Building and the PSB in 2009. Since that time, there's been zero maintenance principally on any of our courtroom spaces. The paint's old, dirty, and dank. The carpet's probably a biohazard at this point. We've got some problems with our, we're required to record as we are a court of record. Some of the original wire runs were not done well, they short out, we lose our record. So we're looking to address a host of maintenance problems in the facility. Jeff Teal from our facilities department was nice enough to become engaged in this about 60 days ago because we'd been having trouble getting coherent estimates from the county on various of these projects. And he's. of these projects. And he's done a pretty marvelous job, I will say, talking facilities, that's a language, with their facilities, folks. He sent me a voicemail just before this saying he finally has the last numbers, and that's why we did, we're doing two SBOs because we just didn't have the correct estimates to do the second one. So he said he sent a unified spreadsheet to Ms. Wallace sometime this morning, which I haven't seen. So I assume we'll be moving forward with the second of these, and that's related to flooring and the moving. This one involves painting, security upgrades, and the issues with our recording problems. So the painting, again, they haven't been painted since 2009, is a little over $30,000. The wiring upgrades at about $15,000. And again, the county wanted us to do far more. As a policy statement, I am fairly loathe to make big investments in buildings we don't own, which at some point, we're just going to hand over to somebody else. But the painting's pretty much mandatory. They indicated they wouldn't participate in the security upgrades, even though one of them directly benefits them also. This was pointed out in a U.S. Marshals analysis of our facility, who walked through and pointed out major security issues. And it has to do with an unsecured fuel tank that could, you know, fairly easily be turned into an excellent bomb. So we'll be putting fencing up around that to prevent unbridled access, which it has no fencing now, and, and working out a key card scenario because the county has a door that they need to transit that's behind where that fuel tank sits. So those are the majors now. Costed about $70,900. The flooring, which is the companion to this, Jeff indicated he has some other soft costs associated in the, in the voicemail. So I know the flooring's about $70,000 also, which would redo all the courtrooms. But I haven't seen his latest spreadsheet, my apologies. So we'll have to discuss that after we've had an opportunity to look at it and I bring back the second SBO. So that's what I know for right now. Questions?
Councilmember?
Yeah, two, two questions. One is, are, on the programming side, is everything fully funded? I mean, is there no, no place where we would use this cash to actually, on the program side?
On the, sorry, on the program side?
All the programming we have in Municipal Court?
Uh,
To support people in Community Court?
No, our programs are not fully funded at this moment. In fact, we just came out of a meeting regarding that. And we have a number of our pilot programs that, that you were kind enough to fund last year, that although showing excellent metrics, are not presently funded in the 2024 budget.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make more sense to divert these funds to help with those funding concerns, especially in light of the fact that we have an ongoing study to consider relocating?
Interesting question. And my answer to that would be generally, yes, I'd rather have actually the programs than the upgrades. But this money was coming from facilities, money asset management. And so that's probably a better question for Ms. Wallace than myself, whether those funds can then be reallocated to some other purpose. These were, again, using facilities funding specifically. So
And I appreciate that. And that, that does clarify. But, but we are still ongoing looking at an analysis of moving Municipal Court.
Yes. And I, and I will just reiterate my comment. If I knew there was another building really on the horizon, the chances I would want to put one penny into my existing space are just nearly zero.
I don't think we've, we've said that we're not going to move Municipal Court into this building, though. So I mean, there's still a lot of options that we have not considered. And to spend $150,000 that might otherwise be better funded, even in studying that, I just, I'm really struggling.
Again, we've talked about a number of avenues. None of them are, have been coming to pass. So I just know that there are security and huge maintenance problems where I am.
Yeah.
If there are other solutions that we get to spend money on city properties and solve, happy to pursue it. But I'm, we're, we're running out of an ability to do this in this budget cycle, where these monies, you know, we've had to do the contracts and get it all done. So again, if we have some sort of more instant solution, councilmember, I'm all over it. Again.
Councilmember Stratton?
So we are making these upgrades to properties that we rent?
Correct.
Are we getting any break on rent or?
There is no break on joint use fees. The way the county provides us space under these MOUs, joint use agreements, is very akin to a triple net lease without any even wear and tear provision. And despite the fact we've been renting this for a decade, they're still not obligated to change out the carpet or paint the walls.
What's the monthly rent that we pay?
I don't know monthly. It's about, I think it was $170,000 a year.
Okay.
Last I recall.
And then my second question, where are we at with the Primera building?
Um, I, I don't know. I was actually taken off that work group at one point. I know they've reduced the price again. I know they remain very interested in selling it to us. I proposed several solutions to various city problems, which makes that more palatable. Whether or not the 1% that the county has on the ballot or not, it's in the mayor's budget that if that passed, that a municipal court facility is one of the priorities expressed. But of course, it does not name Primera or any given building specifically. So that's all I know.
Councilmember Rock, do you have a question?
Yeah, just going back to, you made the statement, the, the minimum we could get away with would be painting flooring. Is there anything specific in a county contractor, that MOU that, is, is that, that minimum coming from you, just what you think?
No, we don't have to do from the, from the MOU perspective. We're not required to do any of it. But if we do do anything, we pay for it ourselves. We, but we pay using whatever the county contractors quote, including paying for the estimates with, which Jeff Teal actually did through facilities. So
I have to comment, I've seen that tank, and probably some of you others have as well, that's outside the courthouse, and that, that has not been addressed by the county. But I have to agree, it is a biohazard. Those floors are absolutely, it's, it's a terrible work environment for our employees over there. If there's funds from facilities that could help improve that environment, I would be supportive of that. But we cannot stop looking at other options. Council President Kinnear?
I'm puzzled as to why we have an MOU and not a lease that outlines exactly what you can and cannot do. MOU sounds squishy to me. Why wouldn't we have signed a lease?
They're basically an interlocal cost-sharing agreement.
But it doesn't sound like we're cost-sharing. It sounds like the city's doing the work and they're getting the advantage.
May, may I say that it is not necessarily under the most advantageous of terms, as you would expect in a negotiated, you know, commercial lease. They would, although they like our money, they, they would, they do have space problems of their own, and have mentioned that if we got mad and left, it would not necessarily make them sad. Although, again, talking about somebody who pays a bunch of money to lease space and defray security costs and all that stuff, is easy to say. Sometimes, right after you lose the cash, it's problematic. But again, I don't supervise county financial management and don't know what their 30-year planning is for their space usage. So that you'll probably have to ask them about. I know there was not much negotiating to be done, although we tried that, particularly on the fuel tank, which benefits both the city and the county. But
Okay. Any question for, any other questions for Howard?
Okay.
So, Member Wilkinson is the only sponsor on this right now. Is there a second sponsor?
Yes, sponsor.
Member Stratton?
So as soon as I get a look at the other spreadsheet, we'll either amend this briefing paper or submit a new one. So we, we look at this more globally. We apologize, we had to do it in two phases. But again, we can only do it as fast as we get quotes from our friends at the county.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you. Okay, our next one is a Joint Budget Discussion Ordinance. And who's going to lead that one for us?
Matt is going to lead that.
That's going to lead, okay.
I will. This is, will be very, very brief. This is something that stemmed from the original conversation that we had with the mayor and the cabinet two weeks ago for the first meeting in some time. It was thought to be extremely beneficial by all parties that were involved. This is brought forward by Councilmember Bingle, Council President Kinnear, and further by Councilmember Cathcart in overwhelming support of continuing these conversations, knowing that whatever budget challenges that we put into our rearview mirror for 2024, that we're cognizant that we have continued challenges in 2024, moving to 2025, and that we need to have these difficult but very important conversations for the foreseeable future. That said, this ordinance requires that the cabinet, pertinent cabinet members and council have meetings once a month, which I believe is the second Thursday. It replaces the study session unless there is a holiday. There's, there's going to be some nuances within the actual languages that are going to change. That brings both the executive and the administrative, or and the legislative branches of government projections together, so that everybody can see them at the same time, ask those questions at the same time, and really answer the difficult conversations towards a successful future.
Okay. Any questions from councilmembers? Councilmembers upon?
I just had a question. If this is taking away from a study session, like, should we just be adding an additional meeting instead of taking away from a study session? Because study sessions seem to be pretty busy usually.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, the thought behind that was that a significant amount of our study sessions per month generally go towards something budget-related. I know that for myself, being that, that I'm earmarked for at least one study session every month for, I believe, 30 to 45 minutes, as it stands right now. And so this just really replaces that and removes the need for the budget committee, that it has all seven members being part of that budget committee, so that there's no more telephone game between different council members, that everybody's surprised at the same information. So that was the reason behind it, that it was actually going to be an efficiency time save and not, not necessarily a time loss.
I had another follow-up question. I, I guess my question is, how is this different? Or why does it need to be by an ordinance instead of just by a resolution about how we meet? Because it looks like a lot of the reporting information's already required.
A lot of the reporting information's already required, but this also includes that all key stakeholders, excuse me, are involved. So that's cabinet members, that's executive administration, that is city administrator, et cetera, that, that is going to be involved in these conversations.
Can we require people to be present at a meeting without a subpoena?
I'm going to
I don't know why we would, or an ordinance for that.
Councilmember Cathcart?
The only thing I would say is, and I support going in this direction, but it is a challenge because when there's all seven of us, then every single one of those conversations will be a public meeting. And therefore, you know, whether or not the administration participates in that, that, that could lead, you know, determine whether or not it's a successful budget committee meeting. So I guess my thought is, one, it should be an ordinance, because I think we have to have some pretty strict kind of requirements as we move forward on this. But then, two, to the extent that we can encourage participation, I don't think we can direct, but encourage, I think we need to, because we have to have those, whether it's from finance or other departments, in those meetings with us to have a good conversation.
I guess, it still goes to my question of like, why not resolution about like, we're wanting to dedicate the next year? Because this would say forevermore that we'd be doing this. I mean, by resolution, it could be too, but
But a resolution is squishy, right? I mean, we can follow it, not follow it. There's really no requirement there.
But isn't it also squishy of compelling people to attend a meeting?
Well, I think it's encouraging, but maybe I misread that. But I don't, I don't think we can compel.
It says shall make themselves available for the meeting. So I, I don't know.
If they don't, I mean, we're not going to put them in chains and haul them off to jail.
Well, so that seems more appropriate for a resolution than an ordinance, because we could potentially setting ourselves up for people to be breaking an ordinance.
The whole point is to get everybody to the table once a month to discuss. So, and for transparency. So that sends a clear message if they don't show up, I would think.
Yeah. And I think we could also talk to legal on, on the intricacies of the, the actual wording on it. I, I know Mr. Wright looked at it. I, I think when I have talked to City Administrator Jones, as well as when I briefly mentioned it to CFO Tanya Wallace, they were both encouraged with the idea, both excited about the idea. So I, I don't, I think that there is buy-in from the other side. And putting it on as a monthly meeting where everybody's schedule is cleared, I think just removes the excuses of not having the meeting anymore. Whereas a resolution, as everyone seems to be saying, is a little bit more squishy, and therefore, just a little bit easier to steer away from.
I guess my last comment is, it, it seems like it would be, I mean, we've, we've legislated by ordinance that you have to go through a process before citing a physical building, a police precinct, and we haven't followed that. So I just don't know why we would be potentially creating an ordinance that
We do it all the time.
But I think that undermines our own ordinances, whereas resolutions are the weight of law, too.
Yes, but
Really?
I mean, it says in our code that says anything adopted as a resolution is a law. So that is an SMC.
We've, we've chosen to do it this way. You're free to not support it.
City Administrator Jones is coming to the podium. Comets?
It's great to see you too, Matt. No, I, I think this is just a great opportunity to try to continue on the momentum. I think a key piece of this as well is that there's a process in which we establish the agenda items as well, and how we've been able, just to establish in this short time with these two meetings, to have the expertise around the executive branch and the legislative branch together. And then to have that dialogue, I think some of the missing pieces in the past was just the process of establishing the agenda items. I think if we're able to establish the agenda items, and yes, a lot of it's going to be focused on budget, but some of them are long-term, yes, budget-impacting strategic initiatives, ideas, whatever it may be, I think it is good practice as a full group that we have those conversations. And talking a little bit too with Council President, I think being able to have those conversations outside of this format as well is very helpful in the, just the dialogue, being able to have those conversations. And so I don't see a downside of being able to establish this as standard practice moving forward, whether it's directly to the operations of the budget, but also, again, those other strategic initiatives and projects, or some of those areas that we need to focus on to resolve a solution moving forward would be truly beneficial.
Okay. And I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that the word "squishy" be used somewhere in the title of the ordinance when it comes before us.
That will be a new word in council vocabulary this year. The newer, the word of 2023 is "squishy." So, thank you, Matt and Garrett. Appreciate that. 3.5, the East Central Community Center roof has been pulled. That is still ongoing with some changes. They'll come back before us at some point. Not sure when it is. Next, we have the Northwest Fair Housing. Are you going to do that, Kim, or come up? Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers. Kristi Jeffers, CHHS Department. I'm here today to request CHHS entering into a contract with Northwest Fair Housing Alliance for the next fair housing plan. The previous plan was adopted in analysis of impediments to fair housing choice in 2019. As recipients of HUD funds, the city is required to affirmatively further fair housing and update its plan on a five-year cycle. So we have worked with Marley at Northwest Fair Housing Alliance to come up with a plan on how that plan would be developed over the next several months. And I'm just here to, oh, I did want to mention that this is an acceptable use of CDBG administrative funds, and so it will be funded out of our grant. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Just that this is a legal requirement.
Yes, we affirm it, we, the city acknowledges and promises to affirmatively further fair housing as a, as a participating jurisdiction in HUD programs. And so, yes, it is a requirement of participating jurisdictions.
Any other questions for Kristi?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to circle back to the question, the conversation we had about the monthly budget meetings, which this just lends into, it did not make it to our agenda, but I just want to bring it to our attention. We have been asking questions about 1590 funds, projects that have been completed, how much is in the fund, how's it being used, there's a lot of chat around that. Kim came back and said it will be one of our next budget discussion meetings. Tanya, you want to speak to that? Thank you.
I apologize, I just have not had time to respond. I think Councilmember Cathcart had sent me an email asking for some information. At this point in time, and I can certainly send you more of the detailed information, I do project that by the end of '23, after the shuffling of ARPA and 1590 takes place, there will be about seven million of that fund available.
Well, let's pretend that there is no swapping of anything. What's the, what's the fund without the swap?
Probably around eleven million.
Eleven, okay.
And I'll send you the details to, to follow up. But it is bringing in about seven million or so in revenues. And what we have committed, the largest contract is the about three and a half million that was done early in this year, and that is contracted out. So that's, and we've got a little bit of administration, but not much more than that right now.
And that was Habitat, right?
That was, that was a group of, there were several.
Okay.
Sorry.
So that's a new word for 2023 swapping out. We've got squishy and swapping. City Administrator Garrett's back up here again.
Sorry, I'm chatty today. Also, just to let the council know, with conversation with Jacoby, the timing of the SBO for Monday regarding the track facility, Kim, Steve McDonald and staff will also give about a thirty-minute presentation, status of 1590, what it looks like, what would, you know, with swapping the four million and ARPA, then what does that look like then for the 1590, as far as the projects that are underway, the timing, and then also conversation around the NOFA that the group is working on as well. So I just want to make sure, we did a lot, about thirty minutes for this study session for Thursday, to have those conversations as well, leading up to Monday.
Can we get some, or can I get some details on the Proclaim Liberty project as well, just to understand the per-unit costs and just all of that?
Sure.
The status, okay.
Yep.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So what's the difference between the thirteen million on the preliminary budget, the starting balance of 1590, and this new eleven million? So we have a thirteen million and eleven million, so I'm confused. Which is it?
Looking at Tanya.
Just make something up.
Tanya?
I can't make something up, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. The, the difference is largely the three point three million that was contracted out through a NOFA earlier in this year.
Okay. All right, got it, thank you.
Okay, well, that gets us through our discussion items. Is there anything else to come before this, council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, and we will see you in November. Thank you all. See you back at 3:30.